To order, please. Roll call.
President Byrne. Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Everyone's here. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to appoint a president pro tem?
Mr. Clerk, at this juncture, I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be president pro tem for the remainder of this meeting.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion? I understand we can do this by voice vote, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. President Pro Tem. And our condolences.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. That's one of those, be careful what you wish for things.
I get more room, though.
Okay, so we have a roll call. We have everything, everything started. So the first thing would be our pledge of allegiance. So everyone stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is citizens wishing to address the board. Got anything? All right. On something other than what's on committee, so. Next item, then, is village manager. Appointment of new assistant village manager.
Mr. President, members of the board, for you tonight, for your consideration, it's actually item O on the dissent agenda. In the employment agreement for the position of assistant village manager.
It's my honor and privilege to recommend John Petrillo to fill the position of assistant village manager. Most of you will remember John as the former deputy chief of the Vernon Hills Police Department. John served the Vernon Hills Police Department for over 24 years, where he was promoted through the ranks and became the deputy police chief, a position he held for nearly 10 years. John left the police department in early 2016 to accept a position as the chief of law enforcement and community services with the Lake County Sheriff's Office. John recently became available when the newly-elected sheriff decided to reorganize his administration. Coincidentally, this was also the same day that the previous assistant village manager left Vernon Hills. John has a master's degree from Dominican University in organizational leadership, and he's attended a number of advanced management and leadership training programs, including Northwestern University, the University of Louisville, and the FBI Academy, all of which are three-month programs. John has also served as an ethics instructor for Dominican University and for North Park College. Prior to joining the police department, John served for four years in the 82nd Airborne Division of the United States Army, and another four years afterwards in the Illinois National Guard. John has a proven record of being a superior leader, project manager, problem solver, and true team player. John has a strong background in human resource issues and information technology issues, and I can only believe that his two years with Lake County, where he supervised over 500 employees, has further strengthened these skills and helped him develop some new ones. I believe that his background and his qualities that I've already mentioned makes John the ideal candidate for this position, and I wholeheartedly recommend the board approve his appointment. John is here tonight to answer any questions you may have, and if the board concurs with my recommendation, I would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of John Petrillo to the position of assistant village manager.
Would that require pulling it from the omnibus, or is that?
The omnibus is his employment contract.
Okay.
This would be the appointment to the position.
Okay, all right.
It would be my pleasure to offer a motion to approve the employment of John Petrillo as the new assistant village manager.
And a strong second.
Okay. Motion a second. Under comments or questions, trustee Oppenheim.
So, I would say normally for a position like this, I would think that we would want to look at as many candidates as possible, but considering the particular attributes of Mr. Petrillo and his longstanding service to the village, the county, the state, and the country, the strong service, I'm in favor of this motion as well.
Yeah, sentiments that I think all of us would echo, that have known John for a long time. Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, then a roll call, please.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome aboard, John.
I don't pretend to be Mayor Byrne, but I'm gonna put John on the spot and ask him if he'd like to step forward and say a few words.
And also, I'd like to invite him to sit at the big people's table.
Well, it's amazing, because we just happen to have a nameplate made for him.
Oh, my goodness!
It's quicker than mine.
Speaking of which, do we need to swear him in as the assistant clerk?
We do need to swear him in as assistant clerk, and we're not ready to do that tonight as a deputy clerk.
A deputy clerk.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I guess I'll start by saying I have been part of many exceptional organizations, but I have never felt more satisfied than my service here when I have served this community. As I mentioned during my interview, I call this community my home and like my family, and I just want to say I appreciate the comments that were expressed during the interview process. And here tonight, Dr. Oppenheimer, thank you very much. I love serving this community, and I hope, you know, in the second chapter of service to the village, to make you as equally as proud as I've done in my previous 24 years here. Thank you very much. I look forward to it.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
No, you're going the wrong direction.
Okay. Does the assistant village manager have a report tonight? No. No, right?
I think he just gave it.
Okay, next is Chief of Police, Squad Car Design.
Thank you, Mr. President. Up on the screen here, we have an image. As I reported to the board in December, the department had been reviewing the graphics on the squad car for some time. As you know, we used to drive Crown Vic sedans. The graphics package that we had was designed for a sedan and then further modified to the SUV-style police car over the years, but it had gotten quite tired. So, we had a committee of officers put together. They researched different ideas, different ways. The guidance that I provided them was that it needed to have more visibility, more reflectivity, from a safety standpoint. And then, they also put out basically a survey and had everyone in the department participate. And this, what you see here, is kind of the winning design. It's presented on both a Ford Utility and a Chevy Tahoe, and will have a lot of reflectivity when it's out there. So, you can expect to see in the next coming weeks, some of our vehicles embalized with this package, and we're not gonna replace all the vehicles at once. So, it'll be over time, so probably over the course of the next couple budget years before we get rid of all the old graphics. But wanted to give a opportunity for the community to see it here before they see it rolling down their streets. And with that, I'll address any questions that any of the board members may have.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you, Chief. Nobody else has a speaking part, correct?
That's correct.
All right. In that case, then, next item is omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through R?
I'd like to make the motion for the omnibus agenda, A through R. I'd also like to just make a brief comment that between items E through, I believe it is K, that just for everybody's information purposes, we have the authority and the obligation to levy a property tax to take care of a number of items, some of which are bonds, others could be, in fact, pension obligations. Each year in January, over the last 14 years, and I believe it's been since the inception of this village, we have been able, via our fiscal management and the ability to collect the sales tax revenue and other revenues that are available to us, that we have been able to abate the property taxes that are so noted in items E through K. So, once again, this year, we are, in fact, abating the property tax, and so that for your property tax bill, you will continue to see a line item of zero for the Village of Vernon Hills with regard to property tax.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion a second. Any other comments or questions about anything on omnibus? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations on Mr. Petrillo. Now you'll get paid.
But not for tonight.
Is there any unfinished additional business? I see none on here.
I have one piece of new business to inquire of the board about.
So, no one finished the new business communication?
Well, I just wanted to bring up that in Pennsylvania, two senators introduced legislation called the Victoria Law to prohibit the sale of commercially-raised dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores across Pennsylvania. This is something that's catching on, and I know that we could probably do the same, so I wanted to bring that to light, that this is happening. People are doing it. It's not anything new. We need to be a voice for those who don't have one, so.
Attorney Hunt?
Don't steal trustee Oppenheim's thunder, but...
Yeah, no, let me go to trustee Oppenheim first.
So, thank you, trustee Brown. I can't remember if you were at the last meeting, but I brought it up at the last meeting as well. Thank you. So, California already passed it, and you said that there...
Maryland?
And Maryland.
And then, there's also 290 localities across the nation that have passed it.
That have passed it. So, I've been working with attorney Hunt on a proposed ordinance that we're going to perhaps bring up at the next meeting, I think will be on the agenda, reflecting that idea as well here locally. I guess the one question that we had was, do we wanted to, whether or not we wanted to include rabbits as well. I don't know if we want to talk about that now or later. So, but either way, we're certainly going to propose an ordinance to prevent the retail sale of dogs and cats, is the intention, and make our ordinance and our municipal code very clear as to the definitions of what is a retail store selling dogs and cats versus a store that sells other pet supplies, because currently, we don't have that distinction in our ordinances.
Now, attorney.
Anything to add?
And working with trustee Oppenheim, we put together a very comprehensive definition of what constitutes, in essence, a pet supply store, to use a shortened term, that contemplates all of those things, but does not specifically permit and specifically excludes the sale of cats or dogs, but still allows for animal clinics, animal hospitals, and true shelters to exist, and that wouldn't prohibit those kinds of functions. Along with that, I'm recommending, and I've already prepared, a text amendment to the zoning code. As you look through our zoning code, pet stores would come in as a special use, but the term "pet store" is not a defined term, although some of the other terms that relate to this, such as animal hospital or clinic, are defined terms. And so, it seemed to make sense to use the same definition of pet store in both ordinances, just to make sure, sort of with a belt-and-suspenders approach, that we've got things covered, and there can be no uncertainty regarding what constitutes a pet store. So, both those ordinances are ready to go. The sale ban would be on the next agenda. The text amendment would have to go before the planning commission before it would come here.
Good. Glad we're moving ahead with this. Trustee Schultz.
Yeah, just so everybody is fully cognizant, though, there can be no pet store of any type without our direct input into it, because our zoning laws already establish that it is a special use and needs to go before planning and zoning first, and then this full board. So, there's no need to burn the village down, so to speak, at this juncture, where there's no way that anything, anywhere near what we're looking to ban, can occur without a majority of this board. And right now, there is no way that a majority of this board will adopt or allow for that special use. But with that being said, the more we further clarify and adopt additional regulations, the better off things should become.
And the reasoning for doing the text amendment is simply because we do have other existing pet supply stores in town, which are acceptable uses, if I can use that term. And if somebody else came in and said, okay, this is a pet store, but we don't have the term "pet store" defined, and we turned down the special use permit, they potentially could come back at the village and make a claim that, under the LaSalle standards, there's no rational basis for denying the special use permit, because it's in a retail area, it's consistent with the other surrounding uses, it's analogous or similar to other existing pet stores, et cetera. And so, to avoid that possibility and make sure this is completely buttoned down, that's the reason for the text amendment.
Trustee Schultz, is this on this, or?
New item.
Okay. Manager Flyshower, is this on decision?
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we get it out there, so that it's understood that, as comprehensive as this is, it does not affect the operation of any of the pet supply stores we currently have in Vernon Hills, so no one gets upset that we're attacking the businesses. And also, the ordinance does allow for the adoption of pets by the reputable licensed adoption places.
And, in fact, encourages it.
Encourages it. So, I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that we're prohibiting everything, because we're not.
Well, at least one of my close friends, who is very involved in pet rescue, and is fully in support of where we're headed with this, because, in fact, all the people I know that are involved in rescue think this is the way to go. Anything else on this particular matter? Okay, then trustee Schultz.
Yeah, within this week's transmittal, manager Flyshower forwarded to us some information from our lobbyist in Springfield, Kurt Fiedler. Everybody should be well aware that, basically for the last 10 years, we've had a lobbyist looking out for our interests. There is a number of proposed bills, because we are in a new session of the General Assembly, and there is a couple of them dealing with the retail sales tax and positioning where the monies would be distributed. I guess what I'm looking for is, based on the input that we got from Morell and Fiedler, that the staff review all these and make recommendations as to things that we should be crafting, nasty letter to follow, et cetera. And speaking with Representative Dietrich and Senator Link, and I'm at a loss for the new representative that serves the west end of our community here, Mary Eddie Allen. Yeah, and the state senator for that district. I'm not sure, I remember it was Duffy before, but not sure who it is now. But anyway, making our voices known concerning several of these. Like I said, the synopses weren't clear enough to me, and so I'm hoping that staff will be able to take a look at each one of these and come up with a position for us to review and move forward on.
Yes, sir. We're working, we're looking very closely at that. And I could be wrong, but my understanding, at least at this point, is the proposed legislation deals with sales from out of state.
It sure looked that way, but it didn't say out of state.
The synopsis is too short, right. It doesn't say that.
And it just talked about a point of delivery and not point of origin. It talked about point of origin being wherever the phone call or text or email was received and the process was initiated, but it didn't talk about being out of state or in state. And it just talked about that the revenue now would be attributed to the delivery location. And so, because I don't know how much the state has to do with regard to interstate commerce and how much they can regulate it, and I think we all think that they have very little capability there. So, that's why that was the most concerning, but there was other ones that, kind of a little too vague for me to get my arms around, so I'm looking for...
Absolutely. That's why we sent it out for your review. Like I said, my understanding is, is this is the state's way of handling internet sales from businesses that are out of state.
Yeah, and that wouldn't be good if it was intrastate, though.
Yeah, the other one would not affect us.
Right.
It would help the state. It would also help us, too.
Right.
We will follow that very closely.
Thank you.
Trustee Oppenheim.
So, along similar lines, in one of the other bills, Senate Bill 21, regarding the smoking age, I was very excited to see that not only were they looking to raise the sale age, but also they included the term, it said, "may be sold to and possessed by," from at least 18 years of age to at least 21 years of age. So, I was very excited about that until I actually looked at the bill language and then called Senator Morrison's office and found out that that language had been stricken long ago. So, the possession aspect, which, you know, I was pushing for earlier, is not something that's being contemplated currently, but they're looking for baby steps to advance this.
Thank you. Anything else, new business or communication?
One thing. Just for your perusal or discussion, the Park District has requested to have a liaison meeting. We do this on an annual, it's done on an annual basis. They're looking for volunteers to serve on the liaison committee, and then we will set a tentative date, if that works.
I've done it, so...
Trustee Markwart?
Trustee Markwart?
Usually, it's usually...
Only have two.
Yeah.
It's usually Roger, the mayor, and it was Barb, and then I backed up, and then I've been, so...
Okay, that's what we will report to them, and we'll work on setting a meeting, and we'll report back to the board with where things are headed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney Hunt?
I just wanted to bring it to speed. We've received several phone calls in the last week or 10 days from Centennial or their representatives, and they're looking to come back in over the next couple of weeks. So, I know that the village manager's office will be contacting each of you to set up some two-on-twos with them and so forth. They have some further work that they've done, both in terms of the so-called Sears site, as well as working toward an overall plan for the when-and-if future redevelopment as different stages would occur. So, and they're interested in looking at some different options along those lines, but certainly, they'd like to sit down with everyone and do that.
All right. Anything else? Okay, then we are going into closed session for...
We'll be going into closed session for personnel?
Right, at the end of committee of the whole, but we have to, when we make the motion to adjourn the meeting, we have to include the closed session.
Pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and we will not be returning for any action.
Okay. And what was the item again, just personnel?
Personnel.
Okay, only personnel, okay. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn the board?
So made.
Second.
All right, motion a second? Yeah. Can we do this by a voice vote? Does that work? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We are adjourned. All right, then I'd like to call the committee of the whole to order. I was confused on, I had a couple different copies of what the agenda was. One had nothing, the other one had one, and the other had three or four. For...
Mr. Clerk, at this juncture, I would like to nominate, right? Is that where you're going?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Trustee Cook to act as chairman pro tem for the remainder of this committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Motion carries.
Well...
Aye.
You need a voice vote, I'm sorry.
Aye.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, then, could you clarify the agenda for me, manager, please?
There should only be one item on the committee of the whole agenda tonight.
Oh.
You got, what, approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes, library, school district, 73.
I had two different, I mean, there's nothing here, and then there's five here.
I got five.
Yeah.
There was an amended agenda that was sent out. There were things that changed at the last minute.
Okay. So, the only things we've got is the minutes of 12:11?
Correct. And then the Goddard School presentation.
Okay. All right. In that case, then, is there a motion to approve the committee of the whole minutes from December 11th, 2018?
So made.
Second.
A motion a second. Are there any comments, corrections, additions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item is the Goddard School for an expansion.
Thank you. And representatives of the Goddard School are here. I can give a brief summary to the board. Tonight is a concept presentation for their proposal to expand their facility with an addition off of the rear or west side of the building. The addition would be 3,750 square feet approximately, and it would be used to accommodate two new classrooms, as you can see on the floor plan in front of you, and also a multipurpose room as well. The architecture would match the existing that's out there, the shingles, the stone, the brick, the fishes and trims would all match the existing. They would also reposition the outdoor playground set to accommodate the addition. Currently, we're still needing to dive into and analyze traffic impacts and parking, which we could do as part of the technical review process. As the board is aware, there is an amended and restated development agreement that applies to this property that was a product of litigation years ago. So, it's not typical zoning that's applied to this. We will be asking for parking demand information and the like from the petitioner as part of the overall review process. So, again, for tonight, this is just a concept presentation. I'll turn it over to the Goddard School representatives to continue the discussion and to answer any questions that you may have.
Hi, I'm Ellen Lay. I'm the owner of the school. We built the school in 2009, so we've been there almost 10 years. And we serve about 120 students, or families, in the community. We're looking to expand for, the two classrooms will, while those, that would be 40 students, we're going to repurpose one of the existing 20-student classrooms and make it an infant room. We have quite a demand for children under two, so we're going to be going from a capacity of 139 FTEs, which is full-time equivalents, to 168. So, on the proposal, or the narrative, we had, I had said 40 students would be added, but I forgot to do the math and recalculate it, given we're taking 12... but I forgot to do the math and recalculate it, given we're taking 12 students away from one of the other classrooms. So for the two classrooms, and the multipurpose room, the multipurpose room, especially given the weather that we've had this winter, we don't have an opportunity to take, to let, have the children outside as much, so having the space for them to do large motor activities, gather as a group for perhaps a in-house, in-school field trip, and also family events, it gives us the space to do that. Do you have any more?
I have a question with it. The building that you purchased in front, what are the plans with that in the future?
The school itself?
No, the bank, but you have...
Oh, yeah, okay, so I, the bank, it didn't, we didn't purchase the bank, it, we couldn't, we didn't, weren't able to agree on the purchase of the bank, it just fell through. So we really want to be able to provide more for the families that are existing, as well as future enrollment. So we've decided to repurpose our current playground for, that we use for the preschoolers, and then just build out on our existing property.
Other questions from, Trustee Schultz?
Okay, so you're looking to add 28 additional students?
Yes.
And how many additional infants?
Eight.
Eight additional infants. And what's your current enrollment of infants?
Eight. So we have eight, so we are, with the second classroom of infants, it would be a total of 16.
Okay. The reason I ask is, we still have a financial agreement in place with the Park District, which is a competitor. And it's my understanding that along with them, that's neither here nor there, but that's out there as just a matter of housekeeping transparency. But it's my understanding, though, that the current existing community still has excess capacity, and I don't know if adding this, especially of the infant range, is a appropriate increase in adding to that community capacity. Can you give me some guidance on what the community is looking like these days?
Sure. For our school, we have, we have quite a bit of demand, that we just, we can't support it. Given our school and what we're providing, I believe the high quality that we're providing is why we have the demand, and the families, we even have internal families that, if they don't let us know that they're going to have a baby, we can't support their second child, because the infants are in the classroom for eight to nine months, and so by the time the parent learns of the, being pregnant, if we don't know about that, we may already have someone committed to that spot. And I think we really want to support the existing families, the internal families, and then the number of families that we turn away, because we just don't have the capacity.
So you're considering your marketplace that you serve, unique and completely different from the other providers in town?
I do. I don't want to speak to the Park District, but I do do market analysis, and when I visit other schools, and I'm always transparent on who I am, I just, and I share information on our school.
Have you shared it with the Park District?
I haven't done, I haven't shared it with the Park District in a while. Because I'm transparent, sometimes I have a difficulty getting into a facility. There's a competitor that hasn't wanted me to come in, and it's, I'm willing to share as well.
Trustee Takaoka?
Okay, so can I assume that the cost of your school is higher than the Park District? Or are you comparable?
We are higher than the Park District.
You're higher.
And I apologize, I don't often do the Park District, I don't, I haven't put them in my market study, probably in 13 years.
You don't need to, no, I'm just asking yes or no.
Yeah.
So here's my take on this, Jim. Quite, you know, we got to have a choice here in this community, so, you know, Goddard versus Park District, cost, you know, there's a cost analysis that a family would make. Their only other alternative would be in, like, Mundeline or Meadowa, or, you know, in Lincolnshire, or, you know...
They just, there was...
Or Libertyville, for that matter, Jim. See, the thing is, I get the Park District thing, but then again, you got to have a choice here in the community, and obviously, they have a high demand.
Right.
Okay? And if they are more expensive, because I'm going to assume they are, Jim, we got to provide that option here in this village. And I don't, I guess I just completely disagree with your angle as far as the Park District. I get what you're saying, but yet I don't for, from the community's perspective. People want a choice. If they want to choose to go to the Park District, they'll go there. I'm sure they do the analysis. That's all.
Anything else from the board or that? Because again, this is just a concept, right? They have to go through...
Yeah, it's just a concept presentation for tonight, and with the board's direction, we would then send this into technical review for staff level review, and then on to planning and zoning for a public hearing.
And then we'll come back to the board?
That's correct, and then back to the Committee of the Hall for further review and consideration.
Unless there's objection from the board, we'll just have them go forward, is that consensus?
Speech.
Well, yeah. I mean, we don't need a vote on it, because we're not...
Sure. And just so you understand, this is a courtesy review, a concept review, it's not a guarantee of future approval. Obviously, you're going to need to meet all the strictures of the technical review process, work with staff, so forth, and go through and get the necessary approval from planning and zoning, and then come back, so.
Yeah, I didn't need to speak tonight, but Mike Elliott, the architect, working with Ellen on the project, I'll be coordinating the civil engineer, we've already met with Mr. Atkinson, just to coordinate those items. We're excited to, you know, look at the success of this project. I was the architect on the original building and came back here, you know, 10, 12 years ago when we went through, and it's just exciting to see, you know, her business do so well to where now we're looking to expand it as far as to meet the need. So we're looking forward to working with the folks here at Vernon's Hill to pull this to the next level.
Right, and there's nothing else on the agenda, correct? So then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Hall.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.